Good evening. Welcome to the regular Monday evening meeting of May 16, 2022. This is the City Council of San Mateo. Going to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we're going to have a special ceremonial entrance of the flag, so please rise for this. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All, please be seated.
You're most welcome to have a seat in the chamber.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, here we are, back in person. I want to say welcome back. And we're excited to be here in person with options for those to choose from, for people who cannot be present to be able to participate here virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. One, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or three, sign, scan the QR code to sign up. The code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options are for public comment. They will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, we have ceremonial items. And the first ceremonial item is National Public Works Week, for which we have a lot of members of the Public Works Crew here tonight. And I'm going to read proclamation in honor of Public Works Week. Whereas, Public Works Professionals are the behind-the-scenes employees who focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to our community, and their work is essential to the public health, quality of life, safety, and well-being of the people of the City of San Mateo. And whereas, the City of San Mateo's infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided and maintained without the efforts of our Public Works Professionals. And whereas, the City of San Mateo Public Works Division workforce is a diverse, hard-working group of dedicated individuals, including engineers, project managers, supervisors, lead workers, maintenance workers, mechanics, technicians, operators, and administrative staff, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's streets, storm and sewer mains, wastewater treatment plant, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to the City of San Mateo. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, students, business owners, and community leaders of the City of San Mateo to understand the vital importance of Public Works and to support the success of Public Works programs in our community. And whereas, the American Public Works Association has celebrated Public Works Week since 1960, almost as old as I am. It is the pleasure of the City of San Mateo to again join with the APWA and recognize and commend all Public Works employees in the City of San Mateo and throughout the state of California. And now therefore, I, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby designate the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. And I call upon all community members to become familiar with the issues that challenge our Public Works and to recognize all the ways that Public Works employees and managers improve our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in San Mateo, and give them a thank you whenever you see them. With appreciation, Mayor Rick Bonilla, City of San Mateo, today. Thank you all very much. That last part was dotted in the script. I added that. Thank you all very much. Okay, well, moving on to the next item of business tonight. It's National Police Week. And we have a proclamation here. Oh, do we have somebody to receive the proclamation tonight? Should I? We have the Director of Public Works, Azalea Mitch, to share some words with us.
Just like to say thank you for recognizing the hard work that our staff put into providing services for the City of San Mateo, and they do it 24/7. And I've been very proud to lead this group, and we're very thankful for your recognition.
Well, thank you very much, and thank all of your staff. Thank you very much. And now, on to the police. It's National Police Week. I also have a proclamation, and I'll be reading it now. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the San Mateo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of residents of our community. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against the deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rick Bonilla, and the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby call upon citizens of San Mateo and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022 as National Police Week, and call upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established themselves as enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further acknowledge that Sunday, May 15, was Peace Officers Memorial Day, and call upon all citizens of the City of San Mateo to honor those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Dated today, May 16, 2022, and signed by Rick Bonilla, the Mayor of the City of San Mateo. I think we have Chief Barberini to come up. We'll present him with this proclamation.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. First, I'd like to congratulate the Public Works Department. We're honored to share a week with them. They do a heck of a job, and we couldn't do what we do without them. So we're happy to share that week. I don't have a lot to say. I'm just, I'm very lucky and fortunate to work with the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department. They do an exceptional job. I'm lucky every day I go to work to just simply be present for the tremendous work that they do. We appreciate your support, and we look forward to great things in the future. So thank you very much for taking the time to recognize us. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chief. And our final ceremonial item for tonight is a proclamation declaring Mental Health Month. I'll now read it. Whereas, according to the 2018 San Mateo County Health and Quality of Life Survey, only a third of those who struggled with mental health actually sought professional help. And whereas, as countless people in our community struggle with a mental health disorder or endure hardship that affects their mental well-being, many are discouraged from seeking services and support or don't know where to turn. And whereas, the key to effectively treating and preventing mental health conditions lies in education, access to support, and quality care and compassion for those who are struggling. And whereas, mental health conditions are nothing to be ashamed of, and therefore, it is important to spread the message that support is out there. And whereas, the global pandemic brought unanticipated changes to us all. This year's 2022 May Mental Health Month focuses on the theme, hashtag SMCT, Take Action for Mental Health. San Mateo County Take Action for Mental Health encourages everyone to take actionable steps to address mental health and substance abuse and substance matters. And whereas, San Mateo County Health Behavioral Health and Recovery Services partners with local agencies and community members to offer free public mental health events throughout San Mateo County, and offers both in-person and virtual events. And whereas, mental health and freedom from substance use issues are fundamental to the overall health and well-being of all community members in San Mateo County, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, or economic status. And whereas, the San Mateo Police Department has partnered with Star Vista to develop a co-response model to better serve those experiencing mental health-related challenges. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Mateo hereby designates the month of May, 2022, as Mental Health Month. Be it further resolved, the City of San Mateo calls upon the community members and partners to recommit to reducing stigma and promoting wellness around mental health and substance use issues in San Mateo County. Signed by me, Mayor Rick Bonilla. And we have here with us by Zoom Sarah Mitchell from Star Vista, the CEO. Please, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me here. Again, my name's Sarah Larios Mitchell. I'm the Star Vista CEO, and I'm absolutely delighted to join you. I wish I could be there in person with you. So first of all, I just want to thank the City Council for taking the time to acknowledge and recognize Mental Health Awareness Month. I think as community leaders, it's so important to take the time and to acknowledge that everyone at some point in their life will have some type of mental health issue. And putting this out in this kind of community setting under your leadership really helps to de-stigmatize those mental health issues that people may experience from time to time. And I think also, it's so important, as you mentioned, that it's important for folks to know where they can go for community resources to get the support that they need in their time of need. And so for all of you to recognize Star Vista during this very important month means so much to me and to our entire staff, and of course, our Board of Directors. We're so proud to partner with all of you with the new Community Wellness Crisis Response Team effort, and so many other things that we do together in partnership. So again, a heartfelt thank you on behalf of Star Vista for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month and for honoring Star Vista. Thank you.
Sarah, I want to thank you personally, because it also means a whole lot to me. I want to thank you and all of the employees at Star Vista. Thank you very much. Okay, well, with that said, we will now move on with our agenda.
Through the mayor.
Madam Clerk, yes.
If I may, we didn't take roll call, and I'd like to do that really quickly, because we do have one member who is remote.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're off to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, Citywide Street Rehabilitation Package 1C Project Phase II Amendment. Item number five, Bermuda Drive Bridge Replacement Project Amendment. Item number six, 2022 Citywide Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and Inspection Large Diameter Pipes Project Agreement. Item number seven, Boards and Commissions Confirm Reappointments, Planning Commission Appointment, and Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee.
Thank you very much, Clerk. Any member of the council wish to pull any of these items for discussion?
No.
Seeing none, then I would ask if there is any member of the public who would like to pull one of these items for discussion?
I have no hands raised. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. In that case, I close this public, oh, no. In that case, I would look for a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda. A second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. I think the first one came from Councilmember Rodriguez. And with that, we'll call for a roll call vote. Please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Now is the time for a public comment for items which are not on tonight's agenda. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item which is not on tonight's agenda can do so at this time. State law prevents council from taking any action on any matter that's not on the agenda. Your comments can be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have Mike Cagiano. Mike, please go ahead and make your comments.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just referring to the matter we've had a couple of weeks back with the bike lanes, and I just wanted to add a little bit of background that I gleaned from the, from the statements of some of the people that I think might have been overlooked, to be honest with you. And add to that, that there's still an enormous amount of discord and unhappiness by the people in the affected area. It really is, to the point where some people think you guys are out to get them. I mean, that's how, that's how bad it is. And I know all you guys are doing the very best you can. Staff did the very best they could, did a good job. But I think the emphasis was missed. And what I want to just drive home is that several of the bikers who were given testimony, this one young lady, I couldn't get her name, said that even when you put bike lanes on Humboldt, she will not use them due to the fact of the speed differential between bikers and the prevailing traffic speeds, and would much prefer the side streets. This was seconded by Michael Weinauer's excellent presentation. At the very end, he said he was mystified. That was the term, he was mystified. Why someone would want to bicycle on Humboldt Street? This was borne out by the fact that the highest accident rate appears from staff studies on the Humboldt and Poplar Avenue streets. So rather than take that as a direction, they double down and decide, well, let's just be able to cram everybody in together so they'll be happy and drive safely, hopefully. But that's not the way the general thrust that I could see was going in. And I think the thing that I, in my written statement that I sent to you guys some months ago, probably at this point, was that the speed differential is a big factor, was not dealt with that I could see at all in the hearings or the deliberations. And just leaving it with that, that I think the smart thing would be to try to discourage bike traffic on Humboldt and Poplar, even if you do go ahead with your strip lanes, which I would hope you would put a stop work on, because I do think you guys are in violation of SB 1000, unknowingly, but I believe you are. And I'll leave you with that. And I know you're all people of goodwill, did your very best, but I think it's going to blow up in your faces. Sorry, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Are there any other comments? Yes.
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, San Mateo City Council. My name is Ryan Modashemi. It's a pleasure to address you for the first time in person. May I add, I was, just wanted to say that I represent a group called Move San Mateo, which is an act of transportation advocacy group that advocated for improvements, bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Humboldt Street and Poplar Avenue, and just want to reiterate a commitment to advocating for parking mitigation options to help improve some of the parking situation that is undoubtedly being experienced by the neighborhood. I think that improvements that address streets that are responsible for 11% of all bicycle collisions in San Mateo over the past five years are much needed and should have been implemented, as you did vote to do. But there is no question that there is more work to be done to pursue parking mitigations. So I encourage your continued pursuit of those mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, any additional comments?
I'm sorry, I have no further hands raised in Zoom, and there is no other in-person in the queue.
Thank you very much. In that case, we're going to close all the comment, and we're going to go back to the agenda. We're on a public hearing. Item number eight, ordinance introduction, access to reproductive healthcare facilities. And we have the city attorney will be speaking with us, I believe.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to see if I can present from here, if my presentation can be pulled up.
I'm sorry, could you please, your microphone?
Sure. So I'm going to present from here, and I'm going to ask if my presentation can be pulled up, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so first, I'm going to give a little bit of factual background. As indicated in the staff report, this has been occurring for a number of years, namely protesters near the Planned Parenthood facility in San Mateo that have been accosting those patrons at the Planned Parenthood facility in an aggressive manner. And that includes reports of those individuals shouting at patrons, blocking the driveway to the facility, and at least in one instance, grabbing the arm of a patient escort. And those are, according to the police reports that we've received, that doesn't necessarily include every single instance that this has actually occurred. And another motivating factor for this ordinance, in addition to the fact that it's on the City Council's strategic priorities for next year, is there's a pending case before the U.S. Supreme Court called Dobbs. And in Dobbs, the court may very well overturn Roe versus Wade. And if that occurs, then there could be additional patients that come to reproductive healthcare facilities in California. So enacting this ordinance would help us prepare for any additional protests and altercations that may occur at the Planned Parenthood facility in San Mateo. And next slide, please. So this is, the ordinance would work in a few different ways. This is, these are the elements of the main component of the ordinance. So it applies within 100 feet of the entrance to reproductive healthcare facility. And under the proposed ordinance, it would be unlawful to willfully and knowingly approach within eight feet of any person seeking to enter or exit the facility. And if you can think of it like, like an eight-foot floating buffer around the person that appears when that person is within 100 feet at the entrance to the facility. So it would also be unlawful to willfully and knowingly approach within eight feet of a person where it's an occupied motor vehicle seeking to enter or exit the facility parking lot. And then this is important, without the consent of such a person or vehicle occupant, for the purpose of harassing or intimidating such person or vehicle occupant. And the terms harass and intimidate are defined in the ordinance. I'm going to get to that in the next slide. I do want to note that the ordinance would not prohibit protesters from being within 100 feet of the facility. They can still be within 100 feet of the facility, and I do have a map later on in the presentation. But it would instead impose this eight-foot floating buffer around people who are trying to access services at the facility. So I wanted to emphasize that point. And so on this slide here, you see a couple of definitions for intimidate and harass. So intimidate, as indicated on the slide, means a true threat to a person with the intent of placing them in fear of bodily harm or death. And harass means a course of conduct directed at those individuals that alarms or seriously distresses, torments, or terrorizes them. And it would not include a quiet, consensual conversation between, say, a protester who is at a stationary position and somebody who is attempting to access the facility. And the reason for that exception is to account for the First Amendment rights of protesters to engage in consensual speech with those trying to enter the facility. And that's been repeatedly emphasized by the U.S. Supreme Court and other courts when they've addressed buffer zones. Harass does include, however, approaching a person who indicates they do not want to be approached. And that's defined in the ordinance a little more specifically. I will also note, the ordinance does not regulate excessive noise, contrary to the staff report. That was considered at one point. But we'll, we'll be monitoring what other jurisdictions do in that regard. There was in Walnut Creek's ordinance, and then they amended it out of the ordinance, at least for the time being. Next slide, please. So in addition to prohibition on protesters harassing or intimidating individuals who are within 100 feet of the entrance, the ordinance would also prohibit obstructing access to or departure from any entrance to a building or driveway of reproductive healthcare facility. So that's another important component, because it's independent of the eight-foot buffer. So in other words, you'll see on the map that I'll show later, there's a driveway to the facility. So even if somebody is not trying to access the facility, say, driving a car or walking to the facility, an individual, a protester, would not be able to obstruct that driveway. Say, somebody is driving down the street. They see a protester there. You know, the protester could not stand in the middle of the driveway, even if somebody wasn't trying to walk up to the facility. It's an independent prohibition under the ordinance. Another component of the ordinance is a law enforcement dispersal order. That applies in very particular circumstances where if there's a gathering, which is two or more people, that, where that gathering, that group of people violates the ordinance, say, they are intimidating or harassing a person who's trying to enter the facility or leave the facility, and they're within eight feet of that person, the law enforcement can order their immediate dispersal. And the ordinance kind of gets into some more specifics about what that dispersal order is, should include. Also important to note is that the ordinance would only apply during a limited timeframe. It's not 24 hours a day. It would only be during the business hours of the facility, one hour before and one hour after. So that also narrowly kind of defines the parameters of the ordinance and order for the ordinance to be narrowly tailored to address this legitimate governmental purpose of protecting access to healthcare facilities. And as I mentioned before, the materials before you are closely modeled on what Walnut Creek did very recently. They adopted an ordinance in early April, and their ordinance went into effect just earlier this month. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm not going to read everything on the slide here, but I'll just focus on the first two bullet points. So the- So the proposed ordinance is really modeled on Hill v. Colorado, which is a U.S. Supreme Court case from 2000 that upheld this eight-foot floating buffer within 100 feet of a healthcare facility entrance. And the U.S. Supreme Court in that instance said, you know, this balances the First Amendment rights of protesters with the rights of individuals to access reproductive healthcare facilities. The court felt that that was an appropriate balance. And then similarly, in Hoyer versus City of Oakland, so it's a Ninth Circuit Federal Appeal Court ruling from 2011, that was itself modeled on the state statute in the Hill versus Colorado case. The court in Hoyer also upheld an eight-foot floating buffer within 100 feet of the entrance to reproductive healthcare facility. The other bullet points on the slide indicate two other U.S. Supreme Court cases where they struck down other buffer zones. One was a floating buffer zone, one was a fixed buffer zone, because the court in those instances felt like it infringed too much on the First Amendment rights of protesters. And before you go to the next slide, let me just take a step back for a moment on kind of the legal backdrop of these cases and this ordinance. Because this ordinance relates to, it does not regulate speech, but it regulates the time, place, and manner of protected speech. That is constitutionally valid, but it still has to be narrowly tailored to serve the government's legitimate content-neutral interests. And in this case, the city has legitimate content-neutral interests. The city has police powers that allow it to protect the public health and safety. And the city can reasonably justify a special focus on access to healthcare facilities and also to avoid the potential trauma to patients who are trying to access those facilities and that that trauma can be associated with confrontational protests that occur adjacent to or in front of those facilities. So the ordinance is narrowly tailored to apply within 100 feet of the entrance. And again, an eight-foot floating buffer of those trying to enter or leave the facility. And eight feet is important because it allows for normal conversation. And that's something the U.S. Supreme Court considered in each of these cases when looking at a buffer zone. They determined, in the case of Schneck, that a 15-foot buffer zone was too far. It was hard to have a consensual conversation 15 feet away. And similarly, in McCullin, in the 2014 U.S. Supreme Court case, it was a fixed buffer zone, not a floating buffer zone, but the court there said, that's too far. That's, it's too great a distance to engage in a consensual conversation between, say, a protester and somebody trying to access the facility. And lastly, I'll just say that the proposed ordinance, it's a regulation of places where speech may occur. It's not a regulation of speech. So it is content neutral, it is viewpoint neutral. It's just a regulation of where speech may occur to balance the rights of individuals trying to access the facility and the First Amendment rights of protesters. Next slide, please. Okay, so in reviewing the ordinance and discussing with Planned Parenthood representatives, you know, we determined that it's appropriate to add a definition to the ordinance of entrance. And the proposed definition is on the slide before you. It's the walkway leading to the front door of reproductive healthcare facility. So why are we proposing this? Because if you measure 100 feet from the front door of the facility out to the street, it doesn't quite cover the sidewalk in front of the facility. Whereas if you measure it from basically the entryway to the grounds, sort of like, it's this sidewalk that's between two buildings, again, I have a map, it's the next slide, you know, then that does cover the sidewalk in front of the facility. So that's what we are proposing today. Next slide, please. So the green dot in the very center of that circle would represent the so-called, quote, entrance, which again, that's the beginning of the kind of a walkway, a sidewalk between the two Planned Parenthood buildings. And, you know, really, if there were one building, you could see how that might be the front door. So it's really not that different in practice. It just means that 100 feet from that point, it would cover the sidewalk in front of the facility that's adjacent to the street. And you'll notice kind of where that arrow goes from the green dot, and there's that 100-foot number on the other edge, the other arrow away from the green dot, that's not far from the driveway to the facility. There's actually another driveway on the other side. So if you think of the 100-foot prohibition as applying to that sidewalk, there's a separate prohibition that would prevent the obstruction of, obstruction of those two, those driveways to the facility. We felt like that adding that definition was, it's definitely a little different from other ordinances, but because, it's because of the way this facility is laid out. It's behind this large parking lot, it's right adjacent to the street. Next slide, please. So, you know, there are alternatives. There could, Planned Parenthood could engage in construction of an entry gate and fence between the parking lot and the public sidewalk. You know, something to consider there is that taking, getting through a gate can take some time, and it can expose individuals just waiting for the gate to open to, it could involve greater exposure to harassment. And it would also not prevent harassment of patients who are within 100 feet of the The other consideration is, you know, Planned Parenthood Security Services, like if they have, say, security services on-site on a continuous basis, and I think we may have some speaker or one or more speakers from Planned Parenthood that can speak to that in more detail. But that's something, that's an alternative for, you know, Planned Parenthood to consider and for the council to keep in mind. Next slide, please. And then, you know, before I get to the staff recommendation, you know, there are, there is an enforcement component to the ordinance. There's criminal penalties, it would be a misdemeanor. There would be civil enforcement options. An aggrieved party, including the reproductive healthcare facility, would be able to bring a civil action and seek damages, including punitive damages and attorney's fees for a violation of the ordinance. So there is that mechanism, again, which is similar to other ordinances. And with that, this, again, the staff recommendation is to introduce the draft ordinance and add the proposed definition of entrance. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Council members, questions? Councilmember Lee, question?
Yes, City Attorney, do you mind just bringing the, the layout of the 100-foot buffer again? And making, I just want to make sure that we're clear about the piece of the driveway and how the driveways will be treated, because it's not, it's not, it's not represented here in the graphic.
Sure, so that's, thank you for bringing that up. That's what I was trying to describe before. But if you look at, apart from this 100-foot circle, so on, if you see the cars pointed towards the sidewalk that's adjacent to the street, you see there's an, there's a drive, one driveway on either side of those cars facing the streets. You see there's a red car, for example, in the upper left corner of that circle. So just adjacent to that, there's a driveway leading to the street. And then on the opposite end of that drive aisle, you'll see another driveway facing the street. So those are the two driveways that, under the ordinance, it would be unlawful to obstruct either one of those two driveways. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Lee?
It does. And so you're saying that, you're saying that basically, like, outside of the perimeter, that if there's someone, for example, on the sidewalk in front of the driveway, that that is also included in, that's prohibited in the ordinance?
Correct. So in other words, even putting aside the 100-foot buffer, it would be unlawful to obstruct the driveway, or for that matter, the entrance to the building?
Okay, thank you. And then, I was wondering if, do we have someone from PD who can speak to what patrolling and enforcement looks like now? Is it proactive or reactive? How does, how does the traffic, traffic officers treat the Planned Parenthood clinic right now?
Well, I'll just mention briefly, as the Chief Barberini walks up, I believe that, you know, as calls for service occur, that representatives from the police department, police officers will show up in response to a call for service, but I'll defer to Chief Barberini.
Yes, thank you, City Attorney. That's correct. This would be a call for service, similar to any other call for service where we received a complaint of somebody violating this particular code section. It's also important to note that a violation of this code section constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, in order for there to be immediate enforcement action taken by a police officer, that offense would have to occur within his or her presence. However, that does not prohibit us from taking a police report, collecting all evidence, including whatever video or anything else would be available, and submitting that to the city attorney's office to be considered for prosecution. So that would be what we'd be allowed to do under this ordinance from an enforcement
Did I just hear you correctly that the officers would have to witness the violation for it to be prosecutable?
No, in order to take immediate enforcement action, which would constitute a misdemeanor arrest, that the offense would have to take place in the officer's presence. However, if we arrived after the fact and took a report of the offense, we would collect whatever evidence is available and complete a report and submit that to the city attorney's office for prosecution. We just would be prohibited, like any other, like most other misdemeanor arrests, from affecting an arrest if it did, if it does not occur in our presence. And that's just dictated by the Penal Code.
I see. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I have another question along that line. Let's say it's referred to the city attorney's office along with whatever evidence is gathered. What are the next steps there?
Well, we'd have to look at the evidence presented, potentially interview witnesses. We'd have to just look into what actually occurred and whether it could be, you know, it's a criminal prosecution, just the provability of the offense, and then determine whether or not it's prosecutable.
And in which case, it's referred to the district attorney, or?
Well, it could be prosecuted by the city attorney's office. I mean, certainly happy to reach out to the district attorney's offices as well, but, you know, that's something that we would have to look at the available evidence and see whether it's something that we could bring to prosecution.
Depends on severity of whatever the action was.
It just depends on the underlying facts, what actually occurred, and depends on the evidence that's presented, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like we have another question?
Well, I just want to add, irrespective of prosecution, it does allow the police to, if there was a big group out at this clinic, it would allow them to at least enforce the buffer zone and keep folks at least 100 feet from the, what we've designated as the entrance, so we could kind of at least get people to separate a little, correct?
Well, it would certainly, in terms of enforcement, there, it's very typically, before an arrest occurs, there would be a warning. You know, the arrest wouldn't occur necessarily immediately, I'm sort of looking at the police chief for confirmation, but, you know, there'd certainly be a way to, you know, separate affected parties, you know, protesters, and perhaps providers, or escorts of patients and patrons, to try and ensure compliance with the ordinance before effectuating an arrest. Because, you know, the goal at the end is compliance. It's not to necessarily arrest and prosecute anybody.
That's right, and ensure people have safe access.
Right, exactly. To sure, ensure people have safe access and to ensure that individuals who are protesting, I'm sort of referring to them in shorthand as protesters, but the individuals that are protesting stay eight feet away from those trying to enter or leave the facility when those patrons are within 100 feet. Again, it doesn't prohibit protesters from being within 100 feet of the entrance, it just prohibits being to, within eight feet of the patron when there's not consent and the other factors are met.
Sure.
So I have another question. I'm looking at the map, and I'm looking at the property, and in my experience and some of the work I did in the past, certainly the property that's owned by the reproductive healthcare facility is private property. Is that correct?
It's not private property.
Right. So plenty of times, I've been excluded from private property by being designated as a trespasser, right?
So there, go, I'm sorry, finish your question.
So is it possible? I mean, because what I'm envisioning is a person with this 16-foot diameter, I mean, you know, eight feet all the way around, right? 16-foot diameter hula hoop going through the parking lot and being followed by people in, on the private property to the entrance point?
It would apply in that circumstance, but there are also other laws that would apply to, you know, there could be a trespass, for example. There's, and, you know, I've, in terms of individuals or protesters actually entering onto the Planned Parenthood property, I have not seen police reports of that specifically. The altercations seem to occur on, you know, on the public sidewalk and before entering the facility, which is not to say that protesters have never entered the property, but the police reports that we've collected indicate those altercations occurring outside of the property. But having said that, the ordinance would still prohibit an individual protester from being within eight feet of a patron, even when they're, go onto the Planned Parenthood property. So once a patron or patient enters the property, there could be multiple laws that apply to that situation.
Depending on requests from the facility for enforcement of those laws?
Sure, depending on requests from the facility or just calls for service to the police department.
From any individual.
From any individual. Including the facility.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, no further questions. Should we go to public comment, please? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. One moment, please. I'm checking the, in the room first. We have no one with their hand raised for that. I do have two hands raised for, from the Zoom call. First to speak will be Jessica Diesel Dorf. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Am I being heard?
Yeah, sure.
Great, thank you so much. I'm Jessica Diesel Dorf. I'm a nurse practitioner and program manager for abortion services at Planned Parenthood Marmonte. I have been working in abortion care for nearly 30 years and working for Planned Parenthood Marmonte as a clinician for nearly 24 years. It is my pleasure and honor to be able to travel throughout the Planned Parenthood affiliate to provide abortion services at different locations and to serve patients with this essential life-changing care. When I travel from my home in Santa Cruz to San Mateo, I enjoy driving through the beautiful rolling hills of the peninsula. And when I arrive at the tiny health center in San Mateo, it's really a jarring sight to see the protesters immediately in front of the clinic building. I've been doing this work for a long time, so to me, it feels like a small trauma to see their graphic signs, to have the protester dressed in a lap coat, rise up from their chair and try, and approach my car and try to block me from coming through. and try, and approach my car and try to block me from coming through the driveway. I don't see it to be an acceptable trauma for my patients to experience that. When they come inside the health center, they're crying and definitely traumatized by that experience of trying to go to a medical appointment and being approached by someone speaking to them, trying to pretend that they're taking COVID information from them before they can enter the parking lot, someone who's dressed as a medical provider. And these, again, these are just the reports that we know about, patients who feel empowered enough to talk to us about what's happened. And so I know that it doesn't represent all of the difficulties that my patients are having accessing those services. At this time, as our attorney friend described, with this really important Supreme Court decision about to be overturning Roe v. Wade, this is a time when California is rising up to protect safe, legal access to abortion care. From my perspective with my patients, it's not enough that the care be safe and legal. This is not only safe and legal, those are the basics. It's vitally important that San Mateo take its stand to make the care more accessible, easier to access, and support us in continuing to provide these services in a loving manner. That's what we need for my patients, safe, legal, and loving abortion care. And I appreciate that opportunity to get to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Becca Horowitz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hi, San Mateo City Council. My name is Becca, and I am an organizer with Planned Parenthood Marmonte. And I just want to first thank you for putting forward this buffer ordinance today because our community really needs it now more than ever. As was mentioned a few times now, the Supreme Court is already positioned to overturn Roe, and we know that after the majority draft opinion was just leaked two weeks ago. And so we know there's going to be a massive influx of patients seeking care in California, including here in San Mateo. And with that influx of patients, we should also expect an increase in protester activities at reproductive healthcare centers as well. And as the City Attorney has just addressed, there have already been several protester incidents at the San Mateo Health Center that have put our patients and our providers at risk. And so really, both our patients and providers deserve to feel safe accessing healthcare and going to, and going to work. And that's really their right to feel safe in their communities. And so with that, I just strongly urge the City Council to adopt this buffer ordinance to secure patients' right to their own safety, privacy, and then also to ensure that people can access and provide care without fear of intimidation or harassment. So thank you for your time. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Seema Patel.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment tonight. I want to note first that I'm currently serving on the Planning Commission, but my comments tonight are my own as a resident of San Mateo. First, I wanted to thank the Council for considering this ordinance. I think it's so important that patients have safe and hopefully trauma-free access to their healthcare providers. I also wanted to relay my own experience. My obstetrician works out of the Medical Arts Building, which is two doors down from the Planned Parenthood building, and the parking lot of that building is often full. And so I would find myself having to park on Baywood Avenue and walk past the Planned Parenthood to get to the Medical Arts Building. And there were several times where I was yelled at by the protesters, and my natural inclination was to walk on the opposite side of the street where there is no sidewalk, that's as far away from the Planned Parenthood as possible, just to be safe. And so one, one note I have is, how can we communicate to people where that 100-foot buffer is, and perhaps counterintuitively, that they have to get close enough to the entrance to be protected by that 100-foot buffer? And then the other comment I wanted to make is, some of the language in the ordinance, I know we're defining what harassment is, but it still feels pretty fuzzy. I never felt like my life was in danger or that I was seriously disturbed, but it was somewhat disturbing to be yelled at while you were trying to walk to your medical appointment. And so how does that line get drawn? How do we dictate when it's moved into harassment? And how can we make sure that we're not just protecting the people that are trying to access the Planned Parenthood, which I believe is very important, but that we're also making sure that just the people who live on that street, the people who are just walking by, can have a pleasant experience walking down that road as well? Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Burns.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am a neighbor. I walk down the street many times a week to the post office, to the post box at El Camino. I witness what I would call harassment, standing on stools on the sidewalk screaming at people who are going into Planned Parenthood. There's a large sign outside that says that you can't harass or intimidate. And it seems to me that screaming above, looking above the hedge at people who are going in is constant harassment. Under my car window windshield wiper, there are constant signs, "Abortion is murder." There are signs on all the telephone poles and all the light poles on the street, and they stay there day after day. If I try and take them down, the man rushes across the street, he will cover them with his body, he will leave notes. The harassment is getting worse. It is affecting all of us who use Baywood Avenue to walk downtown or to use the mailbox at the corner. But I really would like a little more definition. I understand free speech, but I would like to know more about the sign that says that you can't harass people. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm speaking tonight both for myself as a city resident and on behalf of the Peninsula Young Democrats as the organization's political director. Given rising incidents of harassment locally, as well as the recent threats to an assault on reproductive rights that we've seen on the national stage, we're very grateful to see the Council following Redwood City's lead in calling for a buffer zone and urge approval of the draft ordinance tonight. The unimpeded and unencumbered ability of those seeking access to high-quality medical and reproductive care in San Mateo should be sacrosanct. We need to send an unequivocal message that obstruction of such by harassment or intimidation will absolutely not be tolerated in our city. This ordinance does exactly that, and we hope, we hope you'll move forward with it as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ed Callen.
Hi, my name is Ed Callen. I am a resident of Baywood Avenue, 61 Baywood Avenue. I have been a homeowner, voter, and property taxpayer since 2000 here in San Mateo, and we've been here since before the Planned Parenthood opened down the street. We were the house that hosted the neighborhood meetings when Planned Parenthood first moved in, and we brought city council members and the city attorney and the deputy chief of police to our homes. We were, we tried very hard to figure out as a neighborhood how we could freeze out the protesters, what actions we had to make our street a safe and hospitable one for the legitimate healthcare provider, Planned Parenthood, and, and not as hospitable for the protesters. Unfortunately, we were taught civic lessons in First Amendment rights, but nevertheless, we're very supportive of Planned Parenthood and its mission. And my wife has volunteered there for about five years, and we've, we've always wished them the best. I also walk down the street almost every day. I witness terrible, graphic, ugly protests every day. I witness people dressed in medical attire attempting to talk people to come out, out of the, going into the clinic every day. I feel it's abhorrent. I'm very upset by it. I support anything that we can do to remove the protesters or keep them at bay. I'm wondering if that 100-foot buffer barely covers the parking lot? And I'm wondering if there's a way that you can begin to measure the buffer zone from the entrance, from the public street into the private parking lot? That would make a lot more sense to me. It would push the protesters further away. As it is, the protesters will more or less be able to stay where they are right now. And I just wonder if today, this current ordinance will change very much. I would like to see a more drastic change, if possible. I don't know if that is possible, but, but I would certainly recommend it. So, yeah, whatever, whatever we can do to get this street back to the way it used to be, a very family-friendly, very enjoyable, very safe street, would be very welcome in my book. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ryan Monteschemi.
Thank you for considering this ordinance, Council. I did want to just relay an experience I had recently biking across, biking on Baywood Avenue across from the Planned Parenthood. As I was biking, an angry man ran out towards the street in a way that frightened me as someone who is kind of used to obstacles and hazards crossing my way as I navigate the streets. And I was, I saw the hate on his face, and it, it will be seared in my brain for a long time. And when I pieced together the location of the clinic, the face of that man, and the sign he was holding, I first of all let him have a piece of my mind, and second of all, remembered that this ordinance was going to be coming up soon, and thought to make a point of supporting it. And I just want to say that it is needed, and I encourage you to, to help make sure that we can clamp down on harassment that is happening and will be seared in my brain for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other public comment.
Thank you very much. And that, thank you very much, Madam Clark. In that case, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Council for any further clarifying questions or comments?
Comments, not questions.
Sure. Is it, or comments?
Okay. So first of all, I want to thank our City Attorney for all the effort that went into making sure that the parameters of the ordinance aren't objectionable. You know, I was hopeful that when Planned Parenthood approached me in January, the urgency wouldn't quite be there, but we are where we are, regrettably. So I'm very proud, I'm assuming, perhaps I shouldn't assume, but assuming that the votes are there, to say that San Mateo would be the first city in this county to create a buffer zone, as it is home to the largest Planned Parenthood clinic in the region. So with many states taking access to re, reproductive healthcare away, I think our community really must stand up for our residents and ensure anyone can get the care that they need. And this ordinance will work to ensure unfettered access to critical healthcare and to protect staff as well. So reproductive healthcare, I think most women can attest to, is both emotionally and physically demanding. And it is so troubling to think that someone would be harassed and intimidated when trying to seek this care. It is fundamental to preserving the access to this critical healthcare services. I think this ordinance represents our community's resolve that we will not be intimidated, and we will preserve unfettered access. So I want to thank the Council, perhaps, I hope not prematurely, for its support.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilwoman Lee?
I, I have been a client of Planned Parenthood. I have also been an employee of Planned Parenthood. And when I was in graduate school, I, I did a study of the barriers to abortion access in, in the South, where it was technically legal but completely inaccessible. And, and it really pains me to see the, the trauma that the employees and the, and the women seeking services have to experience in, in San Mateo. And, and I, I fully support the intent of, of the ordinance. There are areas where I would like it to be strengthened. I, I'm deeply concerned about the, the reported repeating pattern of a person impersonating a medical professional. I think that impersonating a medical professional and pretending to offer medical, medical services to women seeking service, reproductive health services is, is a gross violation and distortion, and could potentially be very, you know, very dangerous, and it is clearly a deterrent. I, I wonder if that is an area that, that can be addressed in the ordinance. Personally, I, I find, I find the boundaries and the way that they've been drawn a, a little narrower than, than I think in practicality will, in an application will actually create the kind, the kind of trauma-free access that we're, we, we hope to see in the city. And so, you know, I wonder if there's a way to define the buffer zone boundaries at, at the point of, of the, the property lot and, and not at the entrance. So, so I'm concerned about the way that it's drafted, not, not providing enough clarity around how the driveway access will be treated and what constitutes blocking access to a driveway. I have seen and have personally experienced protesters lining up along, along driveways, and, and it's, it, it appears to be a barrier. And so, you know, it would, you know, in those, in those very real situations, a person seeking services would have to actually drive towards the protesters. And at what point does it become clear that the protesters are blocking the driveway? Or, or could that be in some ways distorted and misconstrued as, as somebody driving into a protester? So I, I, I want to raise that concern and lack of clarity. And I also think that the specific context of, and location of this clinic not having a, a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street and having limited and finite parking spaces is, is something that we need to take into consideration, and, and I think is, is, for me, a strong reason to expand the buffer or at least consider a, a different definition of where the buffer zone starts, so that, so that sideways, sidewalk access and driveway access is a lot clearer. And, and lastly, I'll just say that the, the issue of how we define harassment and the narrowness of harassment being defined as, as causing a threat to bodily harm, I think is, is overly stringent. And, and so I, I would like to revisit that definition and, and loosen it so that it can, it can really capture the, the kind of protections I think that we want to provide in San Mateo. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Goffos?
I just wanted to add, it's, that this is not a women's issue, it's a human issue. I think that all of us are touched by this in our lives in one way or another. And so protecting reproductive rights, protecting healthcare for all people is important. I'm all for supporting free speech, but what we've heard described tonight is not free speech, it is absolutely harassment. And so we need to make sure that San Mateo residents who are seeking out medical care are being protected.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to say a few words. I think that this, this, this ordinance cannot come soon enough. I think it's very much needed. I really appreciate the City Attorney's Office working so quickly on I really appreciate the city attorney's office working so quickly on this, and also the delicate balance that they really needed to do. I think that, I'm assuming that, just from hearing the comments and knowing this council, that each one of us wanted the strongest protections as possible that would hold up. And here, our city attorney is trying to do that for us, but making sure it will hold up, because there's been a lot of challenges to such laws. So I have confidence that although, you know, echoing kind of some of the concerns that Councilmember Lee and others had said, that we would like it to be stronger, we'd like it to be more concrete, we'd like it to, you know, take care of this instance or take care of that instance, after getting all my questions answered and reading the ordinance carefully, I really think that this is about as strong as we could possibly go, and still be confident that it would hold up in court. So I appreciate that work from the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to say that I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Rodriguez just made. In my past life, I spent many days on picket lines in front of buildings, along the edges of private property, protected by the First Amendment. I want to say first, I'm going to support this ordinance, but with reservations, because I have seen rights be chipped away at, and this is how rights are lost. And I know they go bit by bit, piece by piece, in defense of seemingly, and what are really, important things to many individuals. But there is so much that has to be weighed and considered. I appreciate the delicate work that I think the city attorney is trying to do here with this issue. I know it's not easy. That's why I asked the question about where the private property is. I don't think we can really extend the effect of the ordinance onto public property. The sidewalk, the street, those are public property. Everybody in this country has the right to be on public property and to freely associate, to seek redress for their grievances. So that said, I wish we had never gotten here, and yet here we are, as a result of, I think, a million cuts brought about by extremism, and many different things. It's important to remember, though, other people feel very strongly about what they feel strongly about, and they have as much right as we do to feel strongly about what we feel strongly about. So that said, I think we're ready for motion.
So I'll move that we adopt the ordinance in its current iteration.
Does the motion introduce the ordinance?
Yes.
With the addition of the definition of entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to have to ask for a break. I have to take a break. So let's come back in five minutes. Thank you.
Chief, was that in your presence?
I think that was probably.
Oh. Let me talk.
Okay, sure.
Sorry? Yeah. Are we ready? Okay, good. Let's go ahead. Thank you very much. We're now going to resume the meeting after our short break. Regarding public hearing on item number nine, which is 1612 South El Camino Real, Property Owner Appeal of Relocation Benefits, the property owner at 1612 South El Camino Real has withdrawn its appeal. Therefore, this item has been taken off the calendar. If there's any member of the public who is present for this item and wishes to comment under the public comment portion for this item, you may go ahead and do so. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to comment?
I have no hands raised. Let me check my in-person, and there's nothing on this item in-person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we go on to number 10. Item 10, which is new business, downtown use of right-of-way. This is an update, and I believe we have presenters from the Public Works Department here tonight. I see several people approaching.
Good evening, council.
Welcome.
Honorable Mayor. Nice to be here in person. So my name's Tracy Scramalia. I'm the Senior Engineer in Public Works. I manage private development, right-of-way, and permitting. I'll be presenting this evening, and along with me will be Sue Ellen. Sue Ellen manages bike and ped planning, as well as parking operations. A little rusty, haven't done this in person in a while. Tonight, the goal is to receive feedback from council on prioritization of the downtown right-of-way, specifically on B Street between Fifth and Baldwin. We will be presenting several options for the use of the right-of-way, but would like to keep these questions in mind. These questions should look familiar, they're the same ones that were in your AR packet. Please note that we do expect to come back in the future, future meeting, to talk about bigger-picture discussions in the downtown, such as pushing back into the private property, zero lot lines, and discussions on open space requirements. So given that there's limited right-of-way in the downtown and competing interests for its use, prioritizing one use has a ripple effect on other uses. Currently, there's three development projects right now on B Street between Fifth and Baldwin, and then also we have the pedestrian mall. So to address the staff supposing both a short-term and a long-term solution. So in the short term, that would be in the next three months. Tonight, we're hoping to get feedback this evening on only B Street between Baldwin and Fifth. And then we would be returning back to you in July with a legislation to memorialize the directions that we received this evening. A second meeting will likely be required to discuss in greater detail zero lot lines and impacts of moving on to private property. So that's in the short term, that's in the next three months. And then the long term, based on the prioritization that we receive, that's identified by city council, staff would incorporate that into subsequent plans and codes and projects as So there are several guiding documents that the city utilizes when reviewing private development projects that may need to be amended, depending upon the feedback that we receive. So first off, it's the general plan. This is our vision for the downtown, for the city, excuse me. It's currently under review, and this establishes the policies and the goals that we use related to the right-of-way. Next is the downtown plan. It was adopted back in 2009, and this is a very specific vision for the downtown of San Mateo. The bicycle master plan was recently updated back in 2020, and that's the guiding document for our bicycle infrastructure throughout the city. The pedestrian master plan was adopted in 2011. This is the guiding document for our pedestrian improvements. It also has our sidewalk standards for all new development in the city. Our municipal code is our city's laws, and then we have the government code that we utilize. This includes things like the Mitigation Fee Act, case law, and the density bonus law. So the guiding documents that I mentioned before are all competing for the use of the right-of-way. We review projects for consistency with adopted city plans, policies, and standards, and this allows a holistic approach based on council's vision, given these adopted documents, rather than a project-by-project application. So development projects typically seek to modify sidewalk width, parking, roadway configuration, site access, and then the inclusion of green infrastructure. So given the guiding documents, PW starts to lay out improvements, but there's only so much room in the right-of-way. We're seeing this issue in both the private development projects that are coming in, as well as our own projects, like the pedestrian mall. This example illustrates the many demands of the right-of-way. So starting from the private property line, we have a minimum sidewalk width of five feet, and if there's a bike facility, minimum width, that would be five feet. And then seven feet minimum for parking, which may include parklets, and then 10-foot minimum travel lane. So if you add this all up at a minimum, we need 38 feet of right-of-way. However, say the sidewalk is widened per the pedestrian master plan, now we're looking as wide as 26 feet, or if we need to have additional travel lanes, for example, the right-of-way needs may go up to like 86 feet. Now, B Street between Baldwin and Fifth, the right-of-way there is 50 feet. So you can see real fast that the width, it's used up. So another option in order to fit these improvements is to push the buildings back, rather than allowing the buildings up to the property line. But this will probably be a discussion for a future meeting, since we're limited in our time this evening. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sue Ellen, and she's going to walk us through some specific examples and options. Thanks, Tracy. I'm rusty as well, I'm sorry. Okay, so first we're going to orient to downtown San Mateo and the current development projects that are going on. So here we have all of the proposed projects that are currently under review in pink. That includes the Donut Delight Project, the Windy Hill Block 21 Project, Drakers, and our Talbotz Project. We also have projects that are currently in construction. That includes the city's own Kiku Crossing Project and the affiliated garage, a Windy Hill Project, and Trags. And then we also have the city's pedestrian mall project right in the middle. So seeing the confluence of projects that are all coming in on B Street, so we have three proposed projects, plus the city's pedestrian mall project, we'll be focusing on B Street between Baldwin and Fifth for tonight's discussion. So first we'll be focusing in on the city's own pedestrian mall project, basically in the middle of B Street. We'll be looking at a cross-section of the pedestrian mall, so basically if you slice the roadway down the middle and then look at it from the side. Okay, so this is a cross-section of the existing pedestrian mall. So as we all know, it's a temporary closure with water-filled barriers. There's one roadway area that's all utilized. We have a center lane that's available for emergency vehicle access, should that be necessary. And then the remainder of this space is shared with pedestrians, outdoor dining, and bicyclists still have full access to B Street as well. Currently bicyclists do utilize the full extent of B Street to access the downtown destinations, including the pedestrian mall, Central Park, or Caltrain Station, employment, dining, et cetera.
dining, et cetera. So next, we'll take a look at the aforementioned 2020 Bike Master Plan and the network that was envisioned previously for the downtown. All right. Got my laser pointer, yay. Okay, so currently, the adopted 2020 Bike Master Plan proposes B Street to be the primary bicycle corridor running north-south in the downtown. I'm not very good at this, I'm sorry. So right there. So that's done through primarily a Class 4 separated bike facility. Class 4 is the highest protection available on-street for bicyclists, and that's typically with a physical separation from vehicle traffic. So that could be bollards, that could be having the bike facility at the same level as the sidewalk, which would be elevated from the vehicles, or some sort of concrete curb. To the south, it's connected to the remainder of the network by a proposed Class 2 buffered bike lane, which is painted bike lanes on the roadway with approximately three-foot buffer. We also have east-west connections along Fifth Avenue, along Third Avenue, and on Baldwin, and then additional north-south connections on the east side of the railroad tracks. So currently, the focus of making B Street the bicycle corridor running north-south is to provide a non-vehicle option for visitors who are coming into our downtown, including now our new destination of the pedestrian mall. So just looking a little more closely at the proposed connectivity and why the network was designed in this way. Apologies. So bringing bicyclists to key downtown destinations was really a focus in the Bike Master Plan, creating a network that's safe and comfortable for users of all ages and abilities. So again, B Street was envisioned to be a primary north-south corridor in the downtown, and supplemented by east-west corridors that then all connect into that backbone of downtown. All of the proposed facilities were envisioned to be tied into B Street to provide that connectivity to those downtown destinations, including the Caltrain Station, to provide options for residents, employees, visitors, to access Caltrain without needing to drive to the station and park. All right. There's also a supporting facility on Clermont that's a bicycle boulevard that connects in to the downtown backbone via First Avenue and a proposed Class 2 bicycle lane. So to provide the connectivity that's envisioned currently in the Bicycle Master Plan within the newly, newly-approved pedestrian mall, there's the option of providing bike facilities throughout the mall while maintaining the pedestrian experience, as well as the outdoor dining option and the recreation space. This could be accomplished through design such as this concept, which has a center lane that would be, that's shared with bike facilities while still providing access for emergency vehicles in the occasion that they are needed. There are, of course, other ways to provide connection for bicyclists through the pedestrian mall. This is one concept. So one question in the list of questions for Council this evening is if the bicycle, if the pedestrian mall is envisioned by City Council to be a multimodal facility, that is to facilitate the planned bicycle facility while also facilitating pedestrian access and on-street dining, or is it envisioned to be pedestrian-only, like this image on the right? There are, of course, various ways to implement both. These pictures show very stark differences, but we wanted to receive Council feedback and consideration on the vision for the pedestrian mall as it relates to the use. Pedestrian-only option does have implications for that bike network that we just stepped through. So for example, right now, the, B Street is envisioned to be through access for the bicycle facility. Other options include bringing the bicycle facility on B Street as envisioned, but if the pedestrian mall is pedestrian-only, not having that bike access through the pedestrian mall. It's possible that bike access could be routed around, that bicyclists could walk their bikes through the pedestrian mall, or other options could be considered. There's also options to move the bike facility off of B Street if that's the intent of Council. For example, Clermont Avenue may be an option for consideration. However, there are projects that were recently constructed or approved along Clermont Avenue, Clermont Street, I'm sorry, that were designed, assuming the proposed bicycle boulevard on that roadway. So the infrastructure has already been designed and/or constructed, assuming the bike boulevard implementation on Clermont, so that may need to be modified in the future where the bike facility to be moved off of B Street. Another option may be routing the facility off of B Street into the downtown, either on Ellsworth or on San Mateo Drive. Both of these roadways are more vehicle-centric at the moment, so there may be, need to have similar trade-offs on these roadways, such as removal of additional parking, because those roadways do have more parking available, as well as some critical analysis in determining how to make those turns and intersection improvements safe for bicyclists and all roadway users. So there are numerous options to consider in terms of the bike, bike network on B Street, or moving it to another facility. If Council direction is to consider moving to another facility, we would need to do additional analysis to rework the network entirely, but there are options to consider. So next, we're going to move slightly north on B Street, just to look a little bit more at those various uses of the right-of-way and how they can conflict in a confined space. So we'll be looking right now on B Street between Baldwin and First. So there is a proposed project, a private development project at this location. This project is proposing to prioritize the pedestrian realm while maintaining on-street parking, and the project proposes to do this by extending the sidewalk area into the public right-of-way. The impact of this proposal is that it would require reconfiguration of the bike network, because the project proposes to eliminate the proposed bike facility on B Street. We are in agreement on the importance of the pedestrian realm on B Street and in our downtown. There are various ways within our public right-of-way on how to accomplish that, so we'll walk through a few of those options now. So the first option serves to enhance the pedestrian experience by widening that pedestrian realm. It proposes to maintain the proposed bike facility on B Street, and in doing so, would remove the on-street parking that's currently available on B Street. This could limit the availability of outdoor dining and parklets. However, a widened sidewalk would provide sidewalk space for dining options. So just taking a little bit of a look at what the downtown parking options are and how it would relate if the option of removing on-street parking were pursued. So these blue dots represent a two-minute walk shed of all of our parking garages in the downtown. So to orient, getting this back, to orient, our B Street area that we're looking at right now is right here. So currently, there are three parking, existing parking garages within a two-minute walk shed of B Street. And then our additional Kiku Crossing future garage is also within that two-minute walk of the further end of B Street. For those who prefer to walk a little bit further, we have four parking garages plus our future garage within a five-minute walk in downtown. So to put it into context, there are about 110 on-street parking spaces total on B Street. About 50 are already removed for our parking mall, or pedestrian mall, excuse me. Looking back at pre-pandemic data, so data from 2018, when we can all probably agree that our parking was heavily utilized. At peak parking demand, all of our parking garages in downtown had available capacity. So this was at the noon lunch hour. We have a total of 269 spaces available within that two-minute walk of B Street at our peak parking demand pre-pandemic. We've not yet recovered in terms of parking demand from the pandemic, but I think that 2018 was a good representation of fairly high usage. We also have the future downtown garage coming in at Kiku Crossing with just under 300 net new parking spaces. Looking a little bit closer to some of the proposed developments in terms of parking, at the proposed Donut Delight project, there are six parallel parking spaces in front of this proposed project. This project is adjacent to two parking garages that, at peak occupancy, had about 200 available parking spaces. Looking a little further down B Street, we have the Talbets and Dragers proposed projects. There are seven parallel parking spaces on this block, and it's currently adjacent to three parking garages, and it's near to our new public parking garage at Kiku Crossing. So a fair number of available parking spaces in that area as well. The question of impact to loading for our businesses, were on-street parking to be considered for removal, has been discussed fairly heavily. And this is a map of, looks a little like chickenpox. It's a map of all of our current downtown loading zones. These are all on-street, publicly available, available first-come, first-served. So we do have a wide variety of locations of on-street loading zones in our downtown currently. Were there to be additional need, if the option of removing on-street parking were pursued, we could do so through design of, of different facilities and look to cross streets for additional loading opportunities. So now moving on to option two. This option proposes a way in which to maintain the proposed bike facility, maintain on-street parking, but in doing so, the sidewalk remains at 10 feet. So that would impact the pedestrian experience that we've been talking about. So you might be wondering, what does 10 feet of sidewalk get us, or what could it get us? So 10-foot sidewalk, that's what we currently have on B Street, so we're probably familiar with that. In a traditional way, you have room for walking, you have some planters or landscape. You could fit bistro tables on a 10-foot sidewalk, just as shown here. Widening the sidewalk just two feet to 12-foot width gives opportunity for outdoor seating plus landscape. It gives room for additional sidewalk dining option while maintaining that through path. Or if the dining were consolidated, you could have foretops that are adjacent to the curb to provide that sidewalk dining experience. Option three provides another opportunity to expand the pedestrian environment. It maintains the bike facilities and maintains off-street parking. The trade-off here is pushing back onto private property. So you get that widened sidewalk, but it does limit the building footprint for the private property if they're dedicating an easement for public access for walking. These are very black-and-white examples that we've gone through, like, if you have one, you need to consider removing another. There are ways to do so in between. There are also creative options that we could look at, including parking removal on B Street, an expansive amount of pedestrian realm experience, and raising the proposed bike facilities to the same level as the sidewalk to provide that separation. In this manner, we'd be able to maintain both directions of vehicle travel. There's an option to look at one-way roadway on B Street, maintaining one lane of parking, maintaining one bike facility lane, also having that enhanced pedestrian experience. And another way to slice it is to look at a single-vehicle lane and a two-way bike facility. So a number of different ways to use the public right-of-way, mostly, most options to enhance the pedestrian realm, but options for consideration in addition to the one previously presented. So moving further south on B Street, down to Fourth and Fifth Avenues, at the proposed Dragers project. This proposal includes prioritization of on-street loading, maintaining our vehicle lanes, and maintaining the proposed bicycle facility that's on B Street. So it does this by pushing back onto the private property slightly. That's a one-foot increase in sidewalk, but that is achieved by pushing onto the private property, and then removing the curb-adjacent loading zone to have that on-street. This does envision a corresponding northbound bike facility on the east side of the roadway. This does, however, this orientation does, however, limit what can be proposed for the eastern side of the roadway. And we'll see that in just a moment. So just looking at how this bike facility that's proposed at the Drager site would correspond to a facility that's going north. So you can see the proposed facility at Dragers, the proposed northbound facility as well, and then the intersection improvements that are employed, very standard design elements to go around the existing curb extensions. We're facilitating the mid-block crossing, we're facilitating access to the parking garage, and really showing how on-street parking can still be maintained where possible, while providing that through connection for bicyclists. So just an option for how that bike facility may look running north from that block. So coming back to the Drager site proposal, where the on-street loading and bike facilities are proposed to be configured. The Talbets project has recently submitted a proposal for the eastern side of this block, and it proposes to extend the sidewalk into the public right-of-way. And you'll notice that that includes dropping off the northbound bike facility on the east side of the roadway. So that, this is not consistent with the Bike Master Plan, and it's not consistent with the proposal across the street. So you can see, without clear prioritization for how to use the public right-of-way, we have conflicts even on the same block, which does necessitate a need for a more holistic look at the, the public right-of-way and a strategy, rather than making determinations block by block or project by project. So with that, I'll hand the presentation back to Tracy.
So given all the competing interests for the, for the right-of-way and various options that Sue Ellen presented, city staff really needs direction from City Council on the prioritization on B Street. So here, we've kind of put it in three different options, but they can all be intermixed and mixed and matched, basically. So starting with the pedestrian, or focusing on pedestrians and parking, for example, this would maintain a zero lot line, so building up to the property line. It would include a pedestrian experience, keep parking, and then also vehicle lanes. But something has to drop off. So in this option, the bicycle facility would drop off, so there would be no bicycle facilities on B Street. So on the opposite end, if we focus on all uses of the right-of-way, we would have pedestrian experience, bicycle facilities, vehicles, parking, but in order to accomplish that, we can't build to the property line, so we'd have to push back onto private property. And this will be talked about in future meetings, but I just want to put it out there as one option. And in the center, we have focusing on both pedestrian and bicycles. Here, we have pedestrians, we maintain the zero lot line, we continue to have bicycle facilities on B Street and vehicles, but then we have the removal of parking. And I think Sue Ellen went over a nice illustration of the available parking in the downtown and how that downtown experience wouldn't be affected. So given that... It's not moving. There we go. So I just want to end with the questions that we presented at the very beginning and that are in your AR packet. So we're really looking for direction from City Council this evening on the pedestrian mall, pedestrian realm, bicycles, and parking this evening. And I can pull this back up when we have the discussion. So that concludes our presentation, and PW staff is all here for, for any questions you may have and to help you walk through. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So let me ask the Council, do we have questions? I see Councilmember Rodriguez ready to go.
Sure, I just had two quick questions. One, when you were looking at the alternatives to move the, the bike lane away from B Street, did you look into Railroad Ave at all?
We had actually looked at Railroad as part of the development of the Bike Master Plan. There are limited facilities recommended on Railroad. We've got a lot of auto repair uses, on-street parking, et cetera, that are well-utilized in those areas. So the implementation of bike facilities on Railroad would likely remove a substantial amount of parking that was currently well-utilized by those facilities. So if there were desire to look at Railroad, we could include that in future analysis.
But would it remove more parking than, than other places, than some of the other routes we were looking at? Or is it just because there are auto repair uses on it?
I would have to look into the number and get back to you. In the downtown, a trade-off in terms of removing parking on-street, we do have public parking facilities that are available. In, in areas such as Railroad, where we have a large number of businesses, we don't have that public parking availability that can make up for a removal of the on-street parking.
Okay, thanks. And, and one other question, can you help me understand, I was trying to figure out how this works, when, when there's a setback on the private property, doesn't it have, doesn't it have to happen on all the, the properties on that block, or else you kind of will have a new development and they'll be out, but then you have maybe a historical building that hopefully is not coming down anytime soon? So how does that work?
Yes, so as, as a project, so yes, for the historical... Yes, so as a project, so yes, for the historical buildings that would remain and not be torn down, they would remain at the building footprint. But then you could have options where new developments are coming in, where we have, we're seeing entire blocks. For example, the Dragers project is developing that entire block. So that's an opportunity where we could push back. Same with the Talbot side across the street, that's an entire block, so we would be able to move back in that, in those areas. But you're right, in other areas where the building footprint would not move, because it's a historic building, then you would have possibly some frontages that would push back and wider sidewalk along that frontage.
I mean, even if it's not a historic building, it can be like that Donuts building that's been there since like the 60s. Well, now it's finally, it looks like it might be being real developed, but it was like there for 50 years. So that basically means it's going to be very, if you utilize that, it's very dependent on where it is and how effective it's going to be and how the parcels are divided up.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my two questions.
So I have some questions about bicycles and bicycle safety on B Street, given a couple of things. So the intention of the bicycle lanes is for the bicycles to be able to go at a speed where they're traveling fast enough to get where they want to go. To protect them, but also to enable them to travel more quickly. Is that accurate?
The protection for bicyclists such as is proposed in the separated bike facility on B Street is more for separation from vehicles, so that there's not a shared lane where there's higher vehicle volumes and vehicle speeds. It's less to allow the bicyclists to go more quickly. It's more about removing the conflict between vehicles and bicyclists in areas where it may not be as safe for that to be done.
Where is it on San Mateo Drive that it changes from a Class II to a Class I? Is it at Baldwin?
To a Bike Boulevard?
Yeah.
I think it's, I would have to look back at that. I don't want to speak off the top of my head.
It doesn't go all the way on San Mateo Drive to Fifth and Central Park?
It doesn't. The way that the bike network was designed was to not necessarily have the same type of facility travel through, but to best fit the facility based on the roadway type. So in looking at San Mateo Drive to the north, where we have the Class II bike lanes that were recently implemented, the characteristics change as it's coming into downtown, which made the Bike Boulevard feasible, where it may not be further north. But that is also assuming that there is a through-north-south connection in the downtown where more bicyclists could be expected to go.
So is the Bike Boulevard that north-south connection?
On San Mateo Drive? That, as shown in the presentation, San Mateo Drive would be an option that we would look at to reroute the bicycle facility. Currently, it's a Bike Boulevard based on the characteristics of San Mateo Drive, the expected travel patterns for bicyclists, et cetera. If B Street were to be removed from the bike network, as it's expected to be a backbone of the network, the facility type for where the network is rerouted would likely change.
Am I interpreting that correctly to mean that the Bike Boulevard could become a Class II or Class III?
It could become a Class II or a Class IV, yeah.
Okay.
Class III is that Bike Boulevard that's the shared facility.
Do you have a rendering of what the bike, the potential bike lane would be on B Street near Dragers? Since I think the council really encouraged, I may have seen it, but...
We have that in the presentation.
It looked like, it looked like it was turning into a garage. Was that the one that you were... I almost stopped you during that slide, because I thought I understood it, but it's... I couldn't tell if the curb cut was for trucks delivering to Dragers, or if the curb cut was an entranceway into a separate garage.
There's no garage entrance that's proposed on the Dragers parcel on B Street. So are you looking right here where it's marked green?
Yes.
Okay. So how this is envisioned and designed by the current Dragers proposal is that the Class IV separated bike facility is between the curb, and then there's about three-foot curb that would be constructed adjacent to the loading zone right here. As of the newest proposal, there are three ramps where vehicle loading may cross the bicycle lane to access the loading facility at Dragers. So the bicyclists would be hugging the curb, and then the loading zone would be vehicle lane adjacent.
In the example where parking is not being prioritized, where is the, how many spaces are we losing on B Street and where are they coming from?
There's approximately 110 on-street parking spaces on B Street, about 50 are blocked off for the pedestrian mall right now. So the delta would be approximately 60.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Okay, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One is, first, regarding the number of parking spaces that we have downtown, I noticed you mentioned that at the Kiko Crossing site, there would be 300 net new, but I'm not sure you included the fact that we're also replacing the 235 existing, so there will be a total of 535 there, correct? And so now we're talking about 50 spaces already gone from B Street, and maybe in a certain scenario, an additional 60 additional spaces eliminated. So yet, at the same time, we're adding significant number of spaces over at Kiko Crossing. So I think we need to be sure and consider that. Also, I think that, let me ask you, regarding the very premise of, you know, the fact that we have the malls doing first and third, and we have a downtown which is going to have two new blocks of development between Fourth and Fifth, right? And the block at First Avenue, from First to Baldwin, also is, you know, I mean, we're looking at it, and there are proposed configurations, and we're not sure at this point even what the land use designation of that is going to be. It appears from a planning commission meeting I watched the other night. And then there's the question of, do we want to allow what's being proposed by, I think, that project at First and B, which is to take more of the public right-of-way from the street to increase the sidewalks to, I guess, 16 feet or more? And are we interested in maybe considering the idea of the pedestrian mall for maybe more blocks than what we already are considering? Because I'm looking at it and thinking that it might be smarter to just have a connected set of blocks where we have facilities, you know, that are uniform throughout. And have we, I mean, have we given any thought to that? Could we give thought to that, going from Baldwin through Fifth? And my ideal actually would be going through Ninth.
I think if it's all right, I would direct that question to the city manager's office.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could. I think the things that we would want to evaluate, especially in relation to the space between Third and Fifth, is just making sure we're taking into consideration the business needs. That's a big, that's one of the big challenges with the pedestrian mall, is the deliveries, the trash pickup, things like that. And we, I think we've worked pretty hard to make that workable between First and Third. We just want to make sure that, you know, we could do the same thing between Third and Fifth, is meet the business needs. And then it just comes down to money, you know, doing the infrastructure improvements, even the short-term improvements on Third to Fifth is a fair sum of money. And the longer-term improvements, you know, one of the things you don't see, you saw the rendering of B on the pedestrian mall with the flat. Well, the reality is, is a big, large crown, and I think, I think if I recall correctly, the center of the street is 21 inches above the curb level. So we would have, we have some significant work to do to really make that a true pedestrian mall the way we would want to over the long term. So these are just some considerations, but I mean, the short answer to your question is, yes, it can be, it can be looked at if that's the desire of council.
Yeah, and it could be actually maybe completed in phases, certainly starting with what we're already looking at and then moving on. I just want to encourage maybe some thinking about a grander ability to enhance and further activate, I think, these for active transportation, for pedestrian, and also, so, I think I'm getting to comments now, so let me not go there. That was my question for now. Thanks.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Lee has her hand up.
Yeah, Councilmember Lee, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, that was a really good segue to my question, which was, can we consider a street closure from Baldwin, on B Street, between Baldwin and First? My understanding is that there's, there's strong interest in that possibility. And I unfortunately have to take the answer offline and get on a bus, so I'm sorry to end my participation in this meeting early, but I, if you'll allow me just to express my support for multimodal transit, and also the exploration of a pedestrian, extended pedestrian mall, particularly in the area that is closest to our Caltrain Station and really sort of the entryway into the downtown. So those are my questions and comments, and I hope everyone has a good night. I'm sorry I asked you too early.
Thank you for your question and your comments, or your comments. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes?
So a couple of things. There are some other private buildings that are allowing parking in the evenings, so I just wanted to throw that in as additional parking spaces. And isn't one of the new buildings going to go in also, going to, at the Talbot site, they're also going to provide that sort of mixed?
Correct. Thank you. That was supposed to be a talking point, and I missed it in the presentation. We do have public parking agreements with various private entities for parking in the evenings and weekends.
Yes, that might alleviate some of it. Can you just show me that slide again as it relates to Dragers, what will be, when it comes to former Dragers and the bike lane and truck unloading?
We're hoping Dragers will still be there.
That'd be okay with me.
One moment.
You see that one? You've brought up a couple times in the questions. So, and I'm looking at the diagram at the right, yes, right where your cursor is.
Yeah, that didn't work. Sorry.
That's helpful, too. If you want to just use that next slide one, that's good for me, too. Either way. I guess I just, I see that there's going to be unloading and then crossing over a bike lane to then get to the structure where you're unloading. Is that what this, I'm getting this right, right?
Correct.
Okay. That would probably be a concern, but you're not taking comments just yet. Okay, so those were actually just the biggest ones I had. I may consider the idea of going further, but with the pedestrian mall, I understand that there are constraints on servicing commercial buildings along that corridor, but, and we'd have to take a look at it, but something I'd be curious to pursue. And then I'd like to know just a little bit more at some point about bike lane rerouting, if it is not going to be with pedestrians. Like, how feasible is that? Is it going to be terribly disruptive? I have some concerns. I know you're not looking for comments, but how do you, let me pose it in the way of a question, how do you get around this idea that pedestrians and cyclists would be interacting on a pedestrian mall with all due safety concerns, you know? So anyway, that's a question, I don't know how you answer it. Would the green arrows show me my alternatives? So you'd either go as far as Claremont East and as far as San Mateo Drive West? And what was the answer to Councilmember Goldthol's question on, that's okay, I know where I'm talking about. What's the distance between where those bike lanes end on San Mateo Drive and getting into downtown?
I believe that they transition from Class II at Catalpa to Bike Boulevard coming into the downtown area. In terms of feasibility of rerouting, it's something that we would need to do redesign and reanalysis. We don't have that prepared quite yet. So in terms of feasibility, we can't answer that at this time, but it's something that, were that to be the desire of council, to move the bike facility off of B Street, we would have to do a network analysis and redesign the network in the downtown. The straight connection on B Street is the most direct connection for bicyclists coming into the downtown. Introducing turns to route off of B Street introduces challenges in terms of safety for bicyclists and also for other roadway users. It can be done, but it is more challenging, and it's not entirely certain that bicyclists would follow a rerouting and may prefer to continue straight. So that's something for consideration.
Yeah. Although if there's pedestrians there in their way, as it were, that might not be a preferred route on B Street, you know, you just, it's hard to plan for every scenario. Anyway, just have some concerns about safety in that regard. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Okay, good. I think that's all of us then. If we're ready, we'll go to public comment.
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify, there were some people who had signed up in the room in person. I think they've all joined Zoom now instead. And so if Mr. Stone would still like to comment, I'll need you to raise your hand. Thank you. And our first speaker is going to be Rayon Monteschemi.
Good evening, council. Sorry that I needed to join remotely. I had to leave, but I wanted to say thank you for taking up this item. I'm representing the San Mateo with this, with this public comment. Our desire, first desires for B Street are inspired by the following prioritization hierarchy for the street. One, pedestrians. Two, bicyclists and active transport. And then three, vehicle circulation slash vehicle storage. The pedestrian master plan calls for wider sidewalks, and the bike master plan calls for separation of vehicles from bicycles on B Street. We believe that we can meet the needs of all these stakeholders through a pedestrian mall and improved wayfinding signage on B Street to the parking garages, increased ADA accessible spaces on the corners nearest to B Street as well. I think that what's important to note is that there's a lot of parking availability, even pre-pandemic, in those garages. So we just need to do a better job about getting people to those garages. The pedestrianization of B Street would allow for pedestrians to be separated from vehicles and bicyclists to be separated from vehicles, and many European streets are designed to get bicyclists to slow down while passing through these pedestrianized areas. We believe that separated bike lanes should be included on segments of road that do not have a pedestrian mall, including through at least Ninth Avenue on B Street. This will make the street safer for people of all ages, walking and biking. Space to do this may be achieved by removing parking or a vehicle travel lane. We also support raising the surface of the bicycle lane to the sidewalk level. It can be done. We also encourage the city to include separated bike lanes on other roads such as Delaware Streets and Mateo Drive or elsewhere. Aside from Delaware, though, please note that none of these streets have the same kind of connectivity that B Street has. B Street has truly been a seed for what a car-free San Mateo could look like. Let's continue watering that seed and making more segments of B Street car free, including between Baldwin and First, and making it a safe place to walk and bike for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan.
Yeah, hi. Can everyone hear me tonight?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Both, thank you to the city council members and also to our police department and the Department of Public Works. I was a nice tribute there at the start of this meeting, so thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention before jumping off into all these points. You know, the more and more I think and see and look, I think you, one of the council members nailed it, it's impossible to plan for every scenario. But I've got three little kids, and we go into our downtown San Mateo almost every weekend. And I can tell you right now that the pedestrian, activating the pedestrian feel and getting the retail, expanding those sidewalks, it makes all the sense in the world. And, you know, getting in and out of there even before our kind of temporary block off, you know, no one would really, or at least locals, I would not try to go down B Street. You know, there's, there's better ways on our bikes to get in and out of the downtown. I think having dedicated bike lanes on B Street really kind of hurts what we're, what we're ultimately trying to do. There are so many other side routes. I know we've talked about San Mateo Drive, taking it down to Fifth, and then even taking it on Laurel, where you are by the park and not necessarily, you know, riding your bikes down in the middle where you've got kids running around and not necessarily looking, especially in an area where, you know, we're contemplating our permanent pedestrian mall. It, it just, it becomes really burdensome. And I just think that there's so many other ways that we can cut it. Railroad sounded like a great idea to me as well. Feels like a very underutilized road, but to have bikes in the middle of B Street takes away from what we're trying to do, I think. A lot of these developments, I think all of these developments that I've seen on your website that are coming have a requirement for, for retail. And so in order for that retail to thrive, we want clear accessibility, and we want to be able to, we want people to be able to come out, drive in, and maybe potentially park their car in front of that retail establishment to pick up food. Certainly in the pandemic, a lot of our, our retailers, our restaurants, you know, the only way they were able to survive was, was on pickup. And so to remove that entirely, just to have a dedicated bike lane in the middle of our thoroughfare, I think doesn't make a ton of sense. I would love to see it moved to another one of these kind of ancillary roads, not our main drag, which is B Street, and really looking forward to seeing what these develop in the spring. As far as aesthetics go, I know you guys had talked about pushing the, the buildings back, which, again, to me, doesn't make a ton of sense, because I do know some of those other ones are historic, and they can't be pushed back, they won't be redeveloped. So having a very unified and consistent kind of retail frontage is going to benefit them as well as the pedestrianization and activating that area without the bikes, in my opinion, is the only way to move forward on this. So thank you all for your time. Sorry to take the full three minutes. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Stone.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and council members. I'm Jonathan Stone of Prometheus Real Estate Group. We're a local real estate development management investment firm based here in San Mateo. Currently working on former track site redevelopment amongst others on B Street next to the downtown train station. Like to thank council and city staff for taking up this important topic this evening. Staff has made clear in their report, there are a number of existing policies and plans in conflict with one another in the B Street corridor. These include, as described, the desired widened sidewalk, sidewalks envisioned by the pedestrian master plan, the newly created parklet plans encouraging outdoor dining, the bike master plan directing a separated bike lane on B Street, and the mall block closures. All are very well intended, but when implemented present inherent conflicts around safety, specifically that of the pedestrian. We very much support efforts working towards creating the best downtown San Mateo we can, one that is safe and has pedestrian use and safety at the forefront. If there can be direction made to reduce the number of conflicts in the current overlapping policies and plans, specifically keeping the pedestrian users and success of the retail environment as the focus, we would very much support that effort. Again, I want to thank staff for all their time on this topic thus far, and we would be happy to be a part of any ongoing discussions regarding these topics to help ensure the best possible outcome for B Street and downtown San Mateo that is as successful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sima Patel.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give a comment tonight. Again, I want to note that I currently serve on the planning commission, but my comments tonight are my own as a resident. First, I want to echo Mayor Bonilla's comments about thinking about the long-term future. I've heard from many members in the community about how much they love the pedestrian mall on B Street, and a question I get asked a lot is, why isn't it all the way to Ninth? Why doesn't it include Baldwin? So as we think about the long term, we should be thinking about how the decisions we make now can enable a bigger, broader, longer pedestrian mall in the future. Do things like curb bump outs make sense if there is a future where the entirety of B Street is closed to vehicular traffic? The second thing I want to say is I think we should prioritize pedestrians and bicycles in order to meet our sustainability goals. I want to note that bicyclists, as I think someone mentioned, are going to take the shortest path. So if B Street is closed to cars, I think that bicyclists will bike down the pedestrian mall. The only way to prevent that is probably to ticket them, and I don't know if we're going to go that far. We have two years of bicyclists and pedestrians using our closed sections of B Street together in harmony. I haven't noticed any issues when my own family bikes and walks in those areas, so I think it can be done. I also want to echo the staff presentation and Mayor Bonilla's comments that we're talking about, I think, 13 spaces, parallel parking spaces on B Street next to Fifth and next to Baldwin, when we have hundreds of parking spaces available in garages. And so in my, my mind, it doesn't make sense to lose the protected bike lanes on the areas of B Street that are open to vehicles to save 13 spaces when we've got so much availability in the garages. And I also want to note that if we don't have parking spaces on B Street, that will allow the vehicular traffic to move faster because they won't be stopping to parallel park. And so that may help solve some of the traffic issues that we see on B Street. And then lastly, I want to note that I think we should maintain the zero lot line. I don't think asking some developments to have setbacks while the historic buildings maintain a building right up to the property line makes sense, because I think that will create an irregular experience on the sidewalks. So that, that's just something to keep in mind as well. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Martin Wiggins.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, Vice Mayor Pappan, and council. My name is Martin Wiggins, and while I was very grateful to be appointed to planning commission earlier this evening, I am speaking only tonight as a resident of San Mateo and specifically one that lives close to downtown and regularly visits on bike and occasionally by car. And I would just speak to my own personal experience that I come downtown more often because of Car Free B Street. I bring my young children more because I know they will be safe and I can relax. And from there, I usually end up buying more stuff, because what kid doesn't want a cookie or mochi nut? Car Free B Street is a place for the whole community to come together, and as such, it is symbolic of our community. It is civic, and in that sense, one could say it's almost sacred. It should be preserved, supported, and expanded. Bikes and pedestrians have been coexisting just fine, I can say from my own experience. If I'm in a hurry, I don't bike down B. If I want a slow and interesting experience, I do. And as we saw, there is easy parking close by. Again, that's been my personal experience as well. Loading, I'm there in the morning getting coffee, and I see loading occur all the time. I think it's part of the choreography of public space, and it's probably a credit to staff's planning that it's working well. I would like to humbly ask council to focus on further supporting the huge success of Car Free B Street and ask that you continue to support and encourage the growth of spaces where people can meet, talk, share a meal, and enjoy those chance encounters that enrich our public realm. This means looking at pushing it up to the north to Baldwin and down to Fifth. I know there are challenges with that. I would just ask that we all continue to have a creative and open mind about how to support a really wonderful civic vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Preston O'Connell.
Good evening, council. My name is Preston O'Connell with Harvest Properties, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening and for all of staff's efforts in preparing for this tonight. It was a great presentation. But I would like to quickly note, as a, as a long-term owner in the downtown, you know, we have a vested interest in, in really having the downtown B Street corridor be very successful. And so we spend a lot of time, and as we've been proposing as various projects, to really see, you know, what makes a successful street corridor. And I think what everyone so far I've heard tonight agrees with in, in our outreach to folks in the community is that the pedestrians should be first. And right now, in the current configuration, the pedestrians gain the least amount of, the least amount of dedicated space. And in our experience, you know, you need a minimum of at least 16 feet in the sidewalk to achieve that, which is actually consistent with the downtown specific plan guidelines. And so we think that should be priority number one of, of getting that condition to exist as a, as a uniform framework all the way down the B Street corridor. And so, as mentioned multiple times tonight, that would be very challenging by simply pushing back, back on a handful of private properties. In our experience, that creates cavernous kind of cold conditions that kind of go opposite of the pedestrianization and vibrancy that I think we're looking to create. So for us, the number one priority is getting that pedestrian priority number one and activating those spaces. And then looking at other ways of reducing the tension points between the other stakeholders, such as parking bicyclists and, and the vehicle. One thing I would note just very quickly is that there is one alternative that wasn't mentioned, which is if the, if the bike lane did want to remain on B Street, that there is a, what we call a share-o or a shared bike Boulevard that could happen with the vehicle that would still allow the travel lane, parking, and the 16-foot sidewalk to exist. Thank you so much for focusing on this. Good evening, good night.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Brian Myers.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the city staff and everyone for the presentation. I ask council to please support the pedestrian and bicycle option. It creates the most pleasant experience by creating a real downtown environment and destination, where the goal is to stay a while, hang out downtown for a few hours, strolling past several businesses, window shopping, and visiting them. Personally, if I'm dining downtown and wanting to relax, it's much easier if there aren't cars driving behind me, idling next to me. My coffee and my meal do not taste good when I'm inhaling exhaust from cars, or even just that one parked car that sits idling for five to 10 mi, for five to 10 minutes for whatever reason. I taste that exhaust, I inhale it, the sounds of the cars and their engines make it harder for me to have a conversation with my friend or my children. It's not very pleasant. As a mom of two young kids and a cyclist, I want to bike downtowns with me, with my kids. I want it to be a safe experience for them biking downtown, and a shared child with cars is not safe. I can only, I can't control the drivers and ask them to watch out for my children when we share a car. I could, there's just a lot of faith in drivers with that. But I want to take my kids down there to enjoy downtown like I do. I don't want to have to always have to drive them, because that's the only safe means to get my kids downtown, other than walking. And to those that are concerned about cyclists going too fast and this being unsafe, I haven't heard or seen this as an issue. I've biked downtown on B Street several times, and it's pedestrians and cyclists do a great job of keeping each other safe. And I, too, would love to see the pedestrian mall extended tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other hands raised.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, then I'm going to bring it back to the council. If you have any further questions, you can ask them. Otherwise, we can start with comments. Anybody have any questions?
Comments, no questions.
Okay, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay. Do you maybe want to put on the, the questions that you want us to address? I guess, so, you know, I, I really understand the, the frustration that I'm, that I'm hearing from the, the cyclists that, that are looking to make sure that they're, that if we're going to be doing something that's going to be taking space away from cars, that we allocate some of that to, to cyclists. I mean, I totally get that. But I think that, you know, having a bike lane go through a pedestrian mall was not what I, and I think most residents who I spoke with when we were talking about this were envisioning with its creation. I think community, community members experiencing the pedestrian mall should be able to put the guard down, relax, with little kids not having to look both ways when they're moving from one side to the other, or not having to make sure your, your small dog's leash is not getting in between a cyclist. I think it should be a place to be, not a place to go through, and not a transportation corridor. When we want to use the space for events like September nights, or maybe a farmer's market, or whatever the future holds, I don't think we should be limited by having two bike lanes go through it. And I also don't think that if we did have two bike lanes going through it and we decided to have the event over the bike lanes, I don't think that we should just all of a sudden cut off the bike lanes. That just doesn't make sense. So I think that this, I, I think that we really need to not say either or. I think we need to say that this pedestrian mall is going to be predominantly for pedestrians and optimized for pedestrians, but then we need to also find the space for, for bikes as well. And, and that's probably going to be at the expense eventually of parking or, or cars, but that's, that's the kind of the way I, I see it. When it, when it comes to expanding the pedestrian, the pedestrian mall, I'm, I mean, I was one of the biggest proponents, I am one of the biggest proponents of, of closing down the two blocks that we, we've had, and I've advocated for that for a very long time. But I'm really concerned that if we don't nail these two blocks and get them right, because one of the blocks is completely empty and is barely ever used, at least every time I, I go there. And I, and I really hoping we made the right decision to have those two blocks done, because one of them, I think, was a no-brainer, and one of them was like, well, let's see what we can do. Well, if we do too much and spread the resources and not get everything done, like, really well, but we do everything sort of mediocrally, I think that that is going to be a mistake. And I'd really, what I'd like to see happen is to prioritize these two blocks that we already have set and leave the option for the other blocks that, that Mayor Bonilla was mentioning, to have them in the future. So, so don't do anything to those two blocks that's going to prevent us, or don't do anything to those additional blocks that would prevent us to expanding, but leaving that option to, to expand after we really nail the two blocks that we have. That's kind of, and that's coming from a place where I really, really want this to succeed, and I really would love to see all of B Street being closed eventually, but I want to do it right. Let's see. I, you know, I've, I've thought about the different paths that alternatives using B Street for, for a long time, and I really think there's something in, in looking again at railroad aff, because I, it just, because it's next to the, the Caltrain tracks, it, it just goes a little bit faster, and I don't think a lot of people, a lot of cars don't seem to be using it. It might be used for a lot of parking, it might be used for the auto shops, but, you know, land uses should change eventually, and, and, and I think that we need to optimize for the, for the public. What have I missed? We've talked about bicycles. I don't think, I, I think that while we're in the temporary, hopefully it's a temporary parking crunch for parking along B Street right now, I would be hesitant to remove any other parking now, but I think that as Kiko crossings, or whatever the, the new name of the, the, the parking garage is going to be, and all of, and, and hopefully we start relying on cars less, I think that then we can start de-emphasizing parking on B Street. And I really hope that happens sooner rather than later. I think those are all my comments for now, but if I missed anything, I'll, I'll talk later.
So I'll go next, and as a shorthand, I agree with everything that Councilmember Rodriguez just said. For the pedestrian mall, I am excited, and I, I support the pedestrian mall as being for pedestrians. I, I think it is really a singular use for people to relax, and as Councilmember Rodriguez said, let their guard down, not have to worry about kids and dogs being hit by bikes or anything else. I think that the pedestrian experience along B Street needs to be prioritized and enhanced with sidewalks and additional protections. And then bicycles, as far as the Bicycle Boulevard, Bicycle Protected Bike Lanes, I think can be emphasized on San Mateo Drive or Railroad or somewhere else, but we're trying to put too many things onto B Street, and, and B Street could fail if we, if we try to go too far. And I also agree that parking can be de-emphasized over time. We're not going to take away all the parking right now, but I'm one of those people, when I go downtown... I go downtown, I like to go straight to off-street parking. A couple of the lots that I like to use are open all the time. I hesitate to tell anybody, except that when I go, when I go, when I go eat at Rise, for example, I'll park underneath in the Caltrain lot, and there is nobody there. And I take a picture almost every time because it is completely empty. And so there is capacity to encourage more off-street parking. And so I think that as we go over time, we'll see that we have the ability to take that parking away as we expand additional blocks of the pedestrian mall. That's my hope. Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Papp.
I don't really think I have anything to add. I would concur with both of those remarks. They were, there wasn't any difference that I could see. So they were so methodical, I don't think I could add to them.
Well, I have to say that I want to thank you for a lot of work. I know this is not easy or simple stuff, and lots of competing interests. I listened very carefully to people saying that over the last two years, bikes and pedestrians have coexisted seemingly safely. I haven't heard of issues out there, even though we have had varying conditions, I think, and not thoroughly thought out, or maybe the best planned conditions, but it was what it was, and it is what it is right now. I want to say that I think, I think rather than saying that I would like it to be completely pedestrian, I feel as though we should have bike paths that do detour B Street. However, I think B Street itself should be bike-permissive. It should be like a bike slow zone where people can bike to and park their bike and then do other things. So we need to have, you know, maybe a couple of signs saying, you know, bike safely, you know, slow down, kids, dogs, elderly, disabled, a couple of graphics maybe. Also, I think we need better wayfinding to the parking, the alternative parking, because I do not support having cars there anymore. I don't think we should have cars on B Street there anymore. So I don't think, I think on-street parking should go away, cars should go find other places to be. So like I say, it's not a transit corridor, it's a different setting. I like the idea of the zero lot line. Buildings should be at the property line. It's been our priority for buildings downtown for a long time. I think it should stay. I think if we do our job right, actual street settings along B Street there should gradually be going away, as we're planning to do with the pedestrian mall, then you don't need to worry about sidewalk widths because it's all sidewalk. And although I think we need, you know, plantings, and we need our businesses to be on board, and I know that for some businesses, this has been a challenge. However, I've been acutely aware of the fact that over years, many downtown uses and businesses have changed, and I think that's a process that's just like evolution, it just continues. And it will be what it is. I think, though, that overall, if we do it right, it'll be an improvement for the retail setting. It'll be an improvement for everybody's use of the downtown and B Street area. And like I say, my vision is that we at least are able to do this from Baldwin through Fifth, but I definitely see B Street south of Fifth changing as we go into the future. It's already changing. Buildings are being built there. I think we need to put in place some standards that look at the future for those developments that are being proposed there. Because San Mateo might not get any more land, but I think we're going to get more people. We're going to have more housing, we're going to have more jobs, we're going to have, I think, a denser environment. We all know that's coming, and we need to plan for it. We shouldn't close our eyes and pretend this is not going to happen. The world is different now. People want to get to downtown on their bicycle, or their scooter, or their skateboard, or that one-wheel thing, whatever it is, right? That's what they want to do. I saw some of those guys doing like forty miles an hour on El Camino the other day, one-wheel. So I don't think that's too smart, but anyway, the world is changing, like I said, and we need to be somewhat accepting of it and planning to move along with the modes that people want to use. I also think we should combine our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I think those should not be separate documents anymore. This all has to work together. And I think that's what I think for now. Thank you. Is that everything you guys need to hear? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11. City of San Mateo Community Facilities District Number 2008-1, which is the Bay Meadows neighborhood, approval of sale of refunding special tax bonds. We're going to hear from our finance director, Mr. Rich Lee.
Rich Lee, City's Finance Director. The item before you this evening is related to the Bay Meadows Community Facilities District refunding bonds. Just a quick background for you. So in 2008, the Bay Meadows CFD was formed. It established a maximum bond capacity of $120 million. In 2011, the maximum bond authority was reduced to $92 million. In 2012, there were just under $32 million in bonds that were issued, and 52% of the infrastructure was completed. The next series of bonds was issued in the following year for $26 million, and 64% of the infrastructure was completed. And finally, in 2014, $28.5 million in bonds were issued, and 90% of the infrastructure was completed. The purpose of the request this evening is to realize some potential debt service savings that are available. Going from left to right, it kind of shows a chronological progression of where the bond market has been heading. The top row there, that's the true interest cost for, that we would anticipate from the bond market. So from February until now, rates have increased significantly, so our net present value savings has been decreasing. So at right now, we anticipate roughly $9 million in savings, and we do have a policy that anytime we do refundings, that it's at least 3% for this transaction. However, we've established a floor of 10%, so we're really trying to recognize those debt service savings. I also do want to note that this is the first step in a process. So first, the first step before you this evening is for the council to authorize the sale of the refunding bonds. After that, you know, when we move forward with that, then we would conduct an infrastructure needs assessment by our Public Works Department specifically for the Bay Meadows Division Development. If the answer to that survey is no, then the city council could adopt a resolution affirming that it no longer will issue any additional debt. There's a remaining capacity of just over $5 million, that it would no longer issue the remaining capacity, and then summarily reduce the special tax rate for members of the CFD. If the result of the infrastructure need is that, yes, we do need that additional capacity, then the city could opt to issue the remaining bond capacity. So just wanted to outline that this is step one of many steps to follow. So the recommendation this evening is that the council adopt a resolution to authorize the issuance of one or more series of bonds, the execution and delivery of one or more fiscal agent agreements, a bond purchase contract, a deposit and escrow agreement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and an official statement and authorizing related actions and the execution of related documents with respect to the issuance and sale of bonds. With that, I welcome any questions from the council. And I should also note that the members of our financing team, including our underwriter, our bonded disclosure counsel, as well as our municipal advisors, are available to answer any more technical questions about the refunding bonds.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
You're reissuing existing bonds? Is that what you're doing?
Well, we're basically defusing the existing debt, so we have the existing debt of just over $82 million that we want to pay off and reissue at a lower interest rate.
I'd love to make a motion after we hear public comment. Anything else? Okay, public comment, please.
We have one attendee left, and his hand is not raised, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, then I'll close the public comment period, and we'll bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt the recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call vote?
Pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gouthos.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee is absent, and Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you, yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you very much. Okay. Been a great council meeting so far. Now we're on to reports and announcements. Any reports or announcements from any council members?
I feel like we have a department director who's retiring or something.
Oh, we do have a department director.
We'll get to that, we'll get to that.
I don't see her here.
She is on the line, but she will be coming to the next meeting.
She'll be coming to the next meeting. Okay, well then, city manager's going to keep his powder dry there for a while, and we will ask if there are any other reports or announcements. Okay, seeing none, then we're going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.